I will call the study session to order. We'll start off with a public comment period for anyone, something to say that's not on the agenda.
I think I know the routine.
Yeah.
I'm Jan Morgan. I live at 201 Spruce Street and Bill is my husband. First, I want to thank the city for, and Joel, for all of the efforts. Parker, all the efforts on the streetscape. It is so beautiful and I think we're gonna just really enjoy it when the trees butt out and people really come downtown to enjoy the warmer weather to come. And that leads me into blight. Bill and I, you know, our, this is a passion of ours and it has been for a long time. It's, it's, we go on little blight tours and it seems to be a lot of the same locations. I know someone from the council asked Bill to take him around and he, I think he was opened his eyes to see what kind, some of the blight that we do have. And it's always, it seems to be the same ones. I know the police have a program in place to notify. I don't know if they just rely on the click fix or if, surely they should see some of these locations when they're in their general route around town. But they, that is not their primary duty. I understand that. But given that, maybe there's some other way to better address this because it's a chronic problem. And that, and people can come to our community and think, oh, what a beautiful downtown, and then drive around and say, oh, my gosh, look at this neighborhood. I don't want to live here. It, you know, it affects the values of our properties. We actually have a neighbor who we get along with beautifully. We've, they've been in our neighborhood fifty plus years as Bill and I have. And I can't say anything to them about things that they should get rid of because it would compromise our friendship. So that's an awkward one. But I do think the council should take the time and, and go around and I think you'd be surprised at some of the, the problems. There's about three of them still above the hill from where Bill and I live that are just terrible. I look them up on Property Search and I'd say the majority are rentals. Also, I know that there's some businesses in the community, the one in particular at the, near the corner of Eastern Avenue, near the industrial park that has the snowmobiles and apparently he repairs snowmobiles. It's like a junkyard. I mean, if, if those were automobiles, you guys, the council, the community would not tolerate that. I'm sure any of you, I know myself and Bill, we wouldn't want it next door to us. The, whoever the people are on, at the foot of, near the water tower, they have all the pallets. It's my time up.
Yes.
Can I spill over just a little bit?
We'll give you an extra.
Given that you may not have many other comments.
Time to wrap up, yeah.
Anyway, that, that's another business too that, there's, there doesn't seem to be a good plan of addressing these problems. And I, and I think that those are things that need to be worked on. But I thank you for your time. I do make a motion that you increase the public comment to five minutes. Maybe you could bring that up at your meeting.
Noted. Thank you. Thank you, Jan.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment?
Good afternoon.
Hi.
My name's Elizabeth Peterson. I reside at 411 River Street and have been a resident of the city of Alleghen since about September of 2018. I returned to Alleghen County to work at the prosecutor's office. And currently there is a third circuit court judicial seat, so I wanted to introduce myself and I am running for that circuit court seat. That election, the primary will be in August and the, then obviously the November election. And so I just wanted to take a moment to introduce you to myself. You might be seeing my name around town. And as a member of this city, I think it's important that we give back to our community and that's what I would like to do. I have been working as a prosecutor for about fourteen years now. And in that, I have been able to advocate for victims and give back to the community and protect the community in which I serve. I work right alongside law enforcement and have been working with law enforcement here in Alleghen County for almost six years now. And prior to that, I worked in Marion County as a prosecutor. And I think it's important to have that relationship with law enforcement. I've done that here and I think that's important. And so I wanted to take a moment to introduce you to myself and also share a little bit more about my qualifications. The circuit court here has announced that this position is going to be primarily criminal. And so that is something that I have extensive experience in. I've handled cases from homicides and torture and criminal sexual conduct first cases involving children under the age of thirteen, as well as those involving teenagers. And so those are pretty significant felonies with harsh penalties and I have been handling those for an extended period of time here. I love what I do and while I'm able to give back to those victims and help protect the community, I want to do more. I think it's important with my skill set that I continue to serve the community and I know that my skills are going to be exactly what Alleghen County needs to do that. There are other people running for this position, so you may have others coming in here to discuss with you their qualifications. But I want you to know that I have lived in Alleghen County and served Alleghen County from the moment I came back to this community. And I think that's important because when we live in the community we serve, we see what the needs of that community are. And it's extremely important that those that continue in public service value that and value that in this community. So as you hear about me, I hope that you understand that's, that's what I'm about. I want to continue giving back and continue serving this community. So I did bring some information and literature. I can pass that out after the meeting. But I just want to thank you for this time to just kind of introduce myself and let you know what I'm about and what I would like to do for Alleghen. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the roundtable discussion amongst council members. Does anyone have anything for roundtable?
Of course, Roger. I was actually downtown last week, Wednesday evening, and had popped in to use our beautiful restrooms and noticed it was dark, well past dusk, and they were still open. And also noticed there's quite a bit of damage in them. There was a hole in one of the stalls in the front. I don't know if that dates back to New Year's or if that's new. A lot of dings and things on the doors. So I think that's a wonderful service that we're providing, but I'm just wondering, are those on a timer? That they, they shut down or do, does law enforcement shut those off?
Yeah, the lights are on a timer.
The locks?
Yeah, the locks are as well. Yep. Automatically locks in the evening and unlocks in the morning and those lights should be on a similar time schedule as the door locks. So I've got a note to go and check on those lights because they may have been adjusted. My guess is on New Year's Eve when it was a later evening down there, so.
Yeah, I don't know what time the, the locks usually engage. That's what I'm more concerned with is the locks.
Yeah, eleven P M.
Eleven, okay. So I just wanted to make sure that they did lock. It says dusk on there.
Gotcha. I see.
Well past dark at that point.
I understand. No, sorry.
It was, it was dusk when we started it and then we moved that to seven to eleven and it mirrors what we have here, seven to eleven as well. So both of our public restrooms are open from seven in the morning to eleven at night, seven days a week. The damage, that was a incident that happened on New Year's Eve. Getting a contractor to do the drywall is a challenge. It's a really small project, so we are trying to figure that one out right now and then we probably have to replace the entire wall and paint. And then there's some other, like just chips I've noticed in the hallway. You know, it's going on four years old and it's heavily used, so.
Joel, have we had any issues with the bathrooms here?
Zero.
Good.
You guys were right. I was wrong. Zero.
I have a question regarding the automatic locks. If somebody's in there, can they get out?
Yeah.
Okay.
The building code now, they require is panic bars. So they, they can get out.
Delora in the roundabout, let me out of here.
Probably the biggest issue we have at the downtown restrooms, from my perspective, is just kids hanging out. They don't have, for some reason, they want to hang out in the restrooms. And they plug their phone in the outlet and they charge it and they just sit there.
Loitering.
Yeah.
Even though there's signs up that say, that, explain what loitering is.
Correct.
Anyone else around the table? Peter?
One thing I would want to look at with our new downtown streetscape we have is what our ordinances or how we can handle when utility work needs to be done and they take out sections of sidewalk. I've seen it many times. They take out a section. They don't take out from expansion joint to expansion joint. They take out part of it and then just fill in that part. And then just creates all these extra divisions in the sidewalk. Is there anything that we can do, whether in ordinance, to say when utility work is done in the right way and it involves removal of a sidewalk, since all sidewalks are city property, that they have to reimburse the city for us to come out and repair it the proper way and not just them toss some cement in the hole and call it good?
Doug and I will look at this tomorrow. We just recently went over our streets and sidewalks ordinance, chapter twenty something. And what was that? All right. Chapter twenty-eight is what Michaela said. We will go ahead and, those are typically covered in ordinances and we'll make sure our ordinance talks about that. We, and you're right, when there's a construction project, if they damage the sidewalk, they're supposed to restore it to what it was. And that's just something we need to be more vigilant.
A lot of times it's they restore it, but they, we had a standard that said from expansion joint to expansion joint is where you'd have to replace. You can't just cut out half of that and then fill that back in and then you're creating extra expansion and extra joints. Like out in front of our shop, after that street was done, less than a year later, they were cutting into the sidewalks and there's patches rather than just whole sections redone properly. And I just don't want to see that happen to the rest of our streetscape if we don't have something in place to kind of force the utility providers or whoever has to go under our sidewalks to take care of it the right way.
Mike, Dave, you know?
I got a question for Doug, not water Doug.
Streets Doug.
I've got a tree right behind my mailbox, two five two Thomas Street. And a year or so ago, we lost a big limb off of it and that tree is looking bad. So if you're out and about, if you take a peek at that tree and.
Two five two Thomas?
Two five two Thomas.
I'll go out tomorrow and take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave?
Yeah, a couple items. One on Hooker Road. There was the sidewalk that was added a few years ago where it goes down into the gully. And it looks like erosion is starting to pull that sidewalk off the road edge. So I, I'm assuming there's some sort of correction we can make there before it gets too bad, so I just wanted to flag that so you had a chance to look at it. You know the part I'm talking about?
What's the location of it?
Hooker Road. So you come off of Eastern, coming into town and you go down the gully and come back up.
Right.
That sidewalk is fairly new there and there's a fair amount of erosion on the side and you can see the sidewalk kind of lifting up off the edge of the road.
Okay. We'll look at that tomorrow also.
That's great. Thank you. Yeah. And then what's our plan for the Trestle Bridge? Do we have timelines on that? I mean, are we fixing it this spring?
I don't think so.
So, I, I think we discussed this at the previous meetings. We applied for a grant last year. We were not awarded that grant. The estimation to replace it is anywhere from eight hundred thousand to one point two million, I believe is where we were when we looked at that. It's closed right now and we'll continue to look for funding that's out there, but with all the other priorities that are in the capital improvement plan, you know, unless we bump something out, that is, you know.
Did you get a chance to look into the bridge park?
Yeah, but I, I did not get a chance to look into that bridge parking. I was going to talk to you about it because I wasn't clear on what you were, what you're stating. There was old bridges down there that we could pick up and bring here?
No, they've been donated old bridges. There's several of them. It's just a park. But there are short bridges. There's long bridges. There's old road bridges. There's all types of them there. There's wooden, metal. And that would be a good, over there, because we're not driving heavy vehicles over it.
Only thing I would have to add to Dave on the question there would be, I think we should address that at our budgeting sessions and put it onto our CIP so that it is actually in our capital improvement plan. That way we have a set time to say, this is where it's at. Now, if we can get it done before then, because we find money, but this is how we can budget for it or we have to find X amount to take care of it. And that's, I think, how we're going to have to address it.
Yeah, I, I think we need a real plan, especially if we want the community to get behind it, right? Like we've got to set a goal, understand what the cost is. And I, I would think we would want to prioritize that, maybe even over like the Hubbard Street parking lot. I, I think we talked about that during budgeting.
Well, we talked about prioritizing all of those capital improvement projects. I don't know that we actually came up with a list of what was a priority or not. We are going to have that at study session coming up in March, is that right? About the fees and all of that as well?
Yes.
So is that something that we could really get into those projects and?
Yeah.
And prioritize?
Yep. We can find a way to, I mean, we'll find time to talk about the capital improvement. We're going to talk about it during the budget sessions anyway in April. So we could dive into the CIP, you know, at that time.
I saw in the city's write-up in the newspaper after the last meeting, I'm just going to read it here. The public comments were made to direct the council to the fact that the Trestle Bridge connected to J C Park was currently holding about twenty thousand pounds of snow. Knowing this, the council might want to rethink the bridge's ability to hold pedestrian traffic. That seems to be the communication that the community's been getting on this and talking to folks. I think they're really under the impression that that bridge is safe and that we're closing it out of, I don't know, too much caution or something. Do we have a way to communicate what's, what, what we've received? I mean, we've gotten two engineering reports. The last one said it's got to stay closed. Do we, do we have a process for a press release or some way to get the right information out to the community on this?
I would have a suggestion, do a write-up on our website and include that, some of the photos and different things that were presented in that report and a link to the full report.
Yeah, we can do that, Peter.
That, address it. People, you go, we can point them to that and go, this is why.
I think that makes a lot of sense. Yeah, it's good, good, Dave. We could also probably speak to a member of the press and have asked that.
That is exactly what that person reported to you. It wasn't what I made up. It's exactly what he said.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking for our communication. Gary, Gary's just a writer, right? Like I'm not looking to, but I'm, I mean, this is what the community is getting. And, and I think staff might even be collaborating with the newspaper to some degree on that. I hope you're.
Nope, we are not.
Providing input to some degree.
Nope, that's unethical for government. It's freedom of press. They can report what they want. It's, government should not be feeding them except through public notices and the press releases we type up here and there. But we don't, we don't give any advice on articles that the newspaper writes up.
But you give information when you're asked.
When asked.
Yeah.
When, when asked, we give information. We have a good relationship, but we don't dictate.
Sure.
The tonality or the formatting of our sentences.
Yeah. Yeah. My, my purpose in calling out Gary was not about the, the past article, but, because I know you were just reporting the words. But I, I was saying, maybe we could have an article.
I would love to do a whole article on that Trestle Bridge.
Yeah.
Because it has a history to it, but it also has a future that hasn't been decided.
Mm-hmm. But it would be good for the public to get, to, to, if, I think if people saw the pictures that we saw, they would understand why the bridge is closed. Yeah, and the need to repair it. Right, right.
The sign on the bridge says it's just per council, it's closed. And so per an engineering report, we would have read thought closing it if that report would have came back different, but it said, keep it closed.
And so just very quickly, we, we will go ahead and we'll put together a press release that identifies the engineering report. Brett, who comes and speaks to you, has read all the engineering reports. We've shared those with them. So he has seen the pictures. He might jump, or the, the public still might jump to the same conclusion he jumped to, which is, I've seen the pictures, I've seen the reports. I think the engineer is just being cautious.
And where I agree with Brett is that M two twenty-two is not a safe pedestrian route either. I mean, I worry about like the Little Tigers Learning Center that's up there. I know they walk kids downtown every year. And they're going to do that this next summer, which is where I'm thinking, we really need to prioritize that and get a safe pedestrian path from the north side. I agree with Brett on that. And, and I agree with the other residents who want that safe pedestrian path. So I, I really think we need to look at prioritizing that bridge and repairing it. I don't think we can just open it with the information we've got now.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think certainly, I'd like to see the, the, the Trestle Bridge or, or replaced or, or fixed. I think people, until then, I think people just have to be wise about, maybe the, bringing the Little Tigers down, walking downtown isn't a great idea while the Trestle Bridge is, is out of commission. Or I guess if we, if people have to walk through, could they walk a little further up and use the crosswalk up by the, up by J C Park? That, that's definitely a safer crossing then.
It's, it's getting across the river that's.
Oh, on the, oh, the, the bridge, yeah. That's, that is, that's a pretty scary crossing. Yeah. Yeah, it's.
It, it's going to be two years, what this may. I mean, we've been sitting out a long time without any plan. I, I think we need a plan and we need to make it a priority and I think it's important for the community. We, we ought to be providing safe pedestrian paths. I, I think we need a plan and we need to make it a priority and I think it's important for the community. We, we ought to be providing safe pedestrian pathways. Okay. Did you have anything else? You said you had a few things. Well, that was, that was a few things. One question I had was, do we have any update on that, the burned house on River Street? Has there been any progress with that?
No progress. I am going to elevate that to a top priority. I wanted to give them to the holidays or past the holidays. We're out of January. We're going to just go ahead and take him to court, cite him. Ask the judge for a demolition order. We'll do the demolition. And then whatever money is left over from the fire insurance that he had, we will reimburse him the remaining amount on, after we cover all of our costs.
Okay. All right. Moving down to. Oh, I thought you told me you didn't have anything.
Oh, no.
Why don't you start, didn't you start off?
Nope.
All right. Bill?
I have a hit list.
I apologize.
Click fix.
You had said that we were going to drop that? Have we?
Yeah, that ends in February, middle of February, right?
It expires the last day of this month.
Yeah.
Okay, so then it's done. Have we got in place the other thing?
So the other thing.
Texting or whatever it was that we were going to do.
Nope, we don't have that in place yet.
Oh, another thing that we started and don't have anything to back it up again, like we are doing with historic.
Okay, so we have, when we presented the numbers to city council. We are saving the city about eight thousand dollars. We do have the ability for people to contact the city and just give us the address. The majority of the complaints we get are by phone calls. People calling and saying, hey, my neighbor's house or I, this is on my annual or my daily walking, you know, routine and I noticed this. Can you look into this? Or it's really a lot of city staff that see the stuff. Most recently, the tree that is laying over the sidewalk on Water Tower Hill. It was Friday night, someone said, Joel, that's been there for a couple of weeks. Can the city take care of it? And Saturday, me and another friend of mine were cutting up the tree over the sidewalk to at least clear the pathway for people. I don't believe C Click Fix has been a very effective tool, especially for the cost that we've been doing.
I agree.
We are looking at TextMyGov. We're going to share that as part of the budget process. But when we list all of the needs the city has, Trestle Trail Bridge, every penny counts. And we got to be very, very, lack of a better word, frugal with our pennies as we look at this stuff.
So there's nothing in place to take the place of Click Fix at this moment, other than calling City Hall?
Calling City Hall, yeah. C Click Fix is.
And our constituents know this.
Yeah, we're going to make an announcement.
Okay. Ordinance enforcement. Have we done anything more on that? Because our ordinance enforcement is terrible.
So.
That's mainly the problem that we have in the historic HDC. No one takes care of the ordinances.
I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm not picking up a question there. Are you?
What are we doing?
So with ordinance enforcement is when we get into the next item on the single lot assessment report and when you read your packet, hopefully you, you will have saw how much money that we have spent on cleaning up private property and how much, this is taxpayer money we have spent on cleaning up private property. And how much we're asking you to put onto their taxes, where if they don't pay their taxes within the three years to the county, the county does the tax foreclosure on that property. Then the county tells the city, you have to pay us back what we paid you. So I'll push back. I, I do think we are doing ordinance enforcement. The majority of the properties, as mentioned earlier, are repeat offenders. It is, it's my opinion that you cannot fix a person's behavior.
That's correct.
I mean, when you look at the judicial, the judicial system, it's recidivism, I believe is the word they use. Kids that are, or not kids, young men that are in jail right now, there's a good chance their parents are in jail. There's a good chance their grandparents were in jail. This was the experience, you know, I had, you know, when I worked in my previous town and the police chief up there just said, it's a shame. But when you show up to the same house and you're, you know, putting, you know, the grandson in handcuffs and you remember, I put the grandfather in handcuffs at the beginning of my career. It's the same with blight enforcement. Those properties, you know, it's just, it's a continued, there's a repeat effect that happens there. We tried to do, and I'll just share, you know, the direction we're going. We tried to hire a code enforcement officer, a retired county deputy. That process did not work. We then tried to bring it in-house to our own police department. That process does not seem to be getting as much done as this council or a few members of this council would like to see done. Starting, you know, in this upcoming budget, we're bringing it all under my roof and I will be the person that's going to be in charge of making this stuff get done. And then if that doesn't work, then council will have a, you know, discussion to have.
Thank you. Rental inspections, how are those going?
Rental inspections are going well. As with all new projects or programs, when you first start them, you hit some bumps here and there. We have a handful of houses that were sent notices that are completely vacant and they are in trusts. And the siblings are fighting over it and so they're just paying their annual taxes and their monthly RTS. But no utilities are being used. We have one, we have a couple of houses like that. We have a handful of parents that, that own homes and they rent them to their kids. And they're trying to say those aren't rental units and you can't make us do it. And we're saying, nope, those are rental units. If the homeowner doesn't live in the structure, it's a rental unit. The only negative thing I heard from a landlord.
In Kilmazoo, family is not a rental unit.
That's okay. In Aligan it is. And the only negative complaint I've heard from a landlord was an inspector was like a half hour, forty-five minutes late to an inspection. And he was not happy that he had to wait for them to show up. So I'm going to talk to PCI about that.
Some people still haven't gotten their notices.
Correct. As I mentioned before, at previous council meetings, they started at the top of the alphabet, the A's, and are working their way down. And a lot of the landlords are just not responding. And so once that period, you know, goes through, then we'll be taking them to court for having a rental unit that's not registered.
Do you know what letter they're at? Because they haven't gotten to the D's yet.
I don't know what letter at. Who was the D's that had?
Dom.
Dom?
Of the store.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to that. How many, when you own the building, Bill, how many units? There are two?
Two.
And each unit had its own separate bathroom, correct?
Correct.
All right. What was the address for that again?
One two one Locust.
All right. I'll email Wendy tomorrow.
Don't I have to say?
All right.
You good?
I'm good.
All right. All right. You got another one?
So I got my permit for keeping chickens. And I just wanted to clarify, this permit runs with the property, so if we are three owners later, they can still have chickens.
I don't know that answer off the top of my head, but I'll look into it and I'll get back to you. So the roundtable discussion is really a time for council to discuss amongst yourselves. If you have questions for staff, twenty-four seven, I am available to meet with you, return phone calls and have those conversations. If two or more of you want to have a conversation, keep it under three, you can come see me. And by under three, I mean three council members, not three minutes.
All right. So now we will move on to item number four, review of the city manager's single lot assessment report. Joel?
Even though it says city managers, that's what it says in the ordinance, the finance department really handles it.
All right.
And I'll kind of bridge the gap here before kicking it off to Tracy. We wanted to put this on council's study session, since this is the first time that we've gone through this process, since the ordinance was adopted in two thousand and twenty-two. And so you'll see on the report a list of the unpaid invoices that can be put onto the tax roll from the year two thousand and twenty-three. And the first step is for council to review the report from the city manager. And then at the next council meeting, which I think will be the twenty-sixth. Then we'll bring a resolution to council, which was also included in your packet, just for your review. As long as there's nothing on the report that, you know, you guys have questions on or need changed.
And in the report, I have everything that's December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, that's delinquent. Hasn't, you know, we haven't received any payments on it. The details of what the invoice was for, the invoice amount, the property owner, the address, and what the assessment will be. We have it in one installment and, you know, these are the, the violations or assessments that, you know, you guys talk about that, you know, when we do the blight, the mowing or anything like that, that needs to be added to the taxes. For this year, we're asking that you, you know, review the resolution, the report and have thirteen thousand nine hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty-two cents go on to the two thousand and twenty-four tax roll.
So the report was in your packet, you see the number of properties, you saw the individual list because you will have to approve that resolution. Are there any questions? This will help the city recoup some of the costs that we have incurred.
Instead, that's just the whole point of this, is just that we're okaying it, it going on the tax roll.
Yeah, and you haven't done this, this council hasn't gone through this process before. This will be an annual process we go through with this council, especially as we ramp up blight enforcement, you know.
The only thing I'd like to say is in looking at this, you obviously can see by the service address and the owner mailing address what, how many portion of it is rental as opposed to the property owner's living there. So as we go into our next discussion, that's something important to keep in mind.
Does anybody have any questions on this?
It's just reviewing the ordinance for the process. So you're presenting to us the report and then after that, we can decide through resolution how much we're going to put on each property and we can choose the full amount or less of it.
That is correct. You guys, I mean, we're going to be recommending the full amount. The resolution will be stating that. If you do not want to recoup the full amount for that work, that is something that you're going to want to probably have a discussion right now on and not when we bring the resolution.
Peter, are you, do you know if people can still do the poverty exemption appeal on those taxes?
They can do a poverty exemption for the regular property tax. I don't know if this would be excluded. That is something outside what I know on it.
Yeah, no, this is, this is a single lot assessment. I'll, I can go ahead and ask our city attorney about that, just to make sure or just to verify what that process would be.
Yeah, I mean, does anybody have any issues with us placing the full amount on the tax roll? Okay. There's no questions.
Excuse me. I guess I'm not following, Joel. We put this thirteen thousand dollars on their taxes, correct?
We haven't done that yet.
No, that's what, but if we do, we get it this year or is that the three years?
So we, we, the county makes this whole, if they don't pay their property taxes, the county makes this whole immediately.
Okay.
And then if they don't pay their county taxes after three years, they have an outstanding debt, it can go into what's called tax foreclosure. And once it goes into tax foreclosure, the, the county sells that property. If the county doesn't clear the, their costs as well as all the reimbursements from the city, the city has to pay the county back. Because the county has to be clear, has to be made whole first.
Correct. Yeah, so the, so if you guys approve these in February, the whole process goes throughout our budget season. And then when I do the two thousand and twenty-four tax roll, which would be the July first for the summer tax. And then that's when we assess these. They're, they're all in July with the summer tax bill. And so everything delinquent as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three will be added to the property on July first, two thousand and twenty-four. And then anything that's not collected by March or February twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth, the following year, then that's when the, the county makes us whole. And then at that point, the three-year thing happens after that.
Thank you.
Anything else on this?
I'm sorry, I have a question. Tracy, in the past, does, is there a trend where we've had to pay the county back anything or?
Yeah, it all depends on the property owner. It, there hasn't been a lot. It seems like there was a couple of the years when Rob was here where we were demoing properties and putting new roofs on properties, that it was higher. But in the twenty years I've been here, that's been like maybe two or three years and then every once in a while. So it's not significant, but sometimes the ones that are have the higher bills. Like, yeah.
Okay, that's, okay, thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else on this, do you have what you need from us? We heard we. Move to item number five, update on Rossman Park Improvement and Pickleball Court renovation project.
All right. So in your staff report, you saw that we received one bid to do the Rossman Park Improvement Project. That bid, you know, came in, I think it was like eighty-eight percent higher than what we budgeted. So we don't have the money to pull this project off. So at the staff level, we talked to Abbott Marsh, our engineer. We decided to ask the state of Michigan if they would consider awarding this grant if we only do the pickleball side of the street. From the get-go, the origin of this project was to resurface the pickleball courts. So that's what we submitted to the DNR. We haven't received anything from them. We also inquired, is there additional money through this program at the state? And that was a very quick, hard no. This money is always expended every year. It is one of the few state programs where if they don't use the money that year, it goes right back into the general fund. So they give the money out, they give the money away each year, which makes us somewhat comfortable that they might say, yeah, we want this project to happen. So even if it's only half of it. Any questions?
Just that this grant has to be spent to, what, fiscal year twenty-four? When's the end date on it?
So this is a grant that would have to be spent, yeah. It's the state's fiscal year twenty-five. So September thirtieth is when we would have to, of this year, is when we would have to spend this money.
That's my question, whether there was time for rebid or not, since we only got one bid. And it seems like I've had quite a few Abernash estimates that have come back significantly higher on the bids. And it's a matter of whether we're getting enough bidders or what's happening on why the engineer estimates seem to be. And it's a matter of whether we're getting enough bidders or what's happening on why the engineer estimates seem to be off quite a bit.
Leading up to this bid, there is five contractors that were in contact with Abbott Marsh. And then they pulled out, just, they just chose not to submit a bid at the last minute. We have an Excel sheet that gives the reasons on why they, you know, pulled out. I share your concern, on the last two projects, they've been high. And, you know, they're going to be doing our Ely Street project, and they're going to be doing the Ely Street project. And I've had a very stern conversation with them about, we need to reverse, you know, that current, that course.
I was curious for Bill, did you guys get a chance to discuss this at Public Spaces yet, they have input on this change?
No.
They did not know about it, this was the first, well, I read it in the packet, I don't think any of the rest of the committee members have even know about this, do they?
No, we have not met since this was made news to us. We meet on the second Wednesday of every month, so our last meeting was the second Wednesday in January.
So they might still have input on this, this is kind of just a heads up before the Public Spaces discussion?
Yeah.
That makes sense.
So the engineers give you a rough ballpark of what the cost should be?
Yeah, so in your packet, when you read the report, you saw the bid tab sheet, and then you see the engineers that, you know, estimate. They're in the middle columns of your packet that we sent to you. And then the far right side is the Keterberg Verhaegh estimates. So you can see what the engineer's estimate was, you can go through, see where, you know, there's a big, you know, this, you know, descrip, you know, discretion.
So is it time to look for a new engineer?
I do not believe so.
This is coming in eighty percent higher, the streetscape came in five million higher.
The streetscape did not come in five million higher, it came in higher, but not five million.
Yeah, it seems with everything in the last few years, with material costs. And the difficulty to get contractors, I think it's, everybody's trying to readjust and figure out how to, how to bid things now and estimate. So I think we need to encourage them sternly, I like that term, to, to do better. But I think, I think everybody's having difficulty figuring out what costs are going to be.
Well, that's their business, they should be able to get it better than eighty percent off.
Eighty percent off is, is rough, you're right, that's a, that's a big chunk. But. Yeah, I think, yeah, I don't know if anybody's going to do it better than that at this point, hopefully better than eighty percent.
And, I mean, if council wants to have a conversation about our, about our engineer record, we can. You know, the other information you need to know, the streetscape got two million dollars because of who our engineer was. They set up the meetings with the people in Lansing, where Parker and I had the conversations with them in Benton Harbor, to sell our project to, you know, our state senator. Their model of they write the grants. And then they manage the grants for us as part of the project, is not duplicate, it's not duplicated by any other engineering firm. So if we go to a different engineering firm, we're going to have to absorb that work. Not justifying this, we had this stern conversation, because if they can't get this part right, it's great, they're getting the other stuff done for us, but we need all of them done.
Yeah, because if we can't establish our budgets based on engineer estimates, it makes it very hard for us to budget for projects and CIPs. So that's a very important part that these come in. I see ten, twenty percent, but we've had it with the Second Street Bridge, the Downtown Streetscape, this project. I just want to make sure, if they're addressing why their engineering estimates are off, if it's a matter of they don't get enough people bidding? Or is it that the actual bidding amount or the cost that they have aren't accurate to today's inflated numbers? And they have to adjust it, just so, I just want accurate information is all I want. So then when we make cuts to projects and say we need to cut this or that out of the project, we have a good estimate to start with.
This was a big disappointment for me to see how much had to be cut. I'm happy to see that we're keeping the ADA, at least on the side of pickleball courts, because that's, that was kind of a sticking point for me with this whole project moving forward. But I will say, I feel like we get very good service from Abbott Marsh, this is really bad, but things are in flux. So I'm, I'm pleased with them overall. And if there's been some conversation, I hope it is clear that moving forward, they may need to inflate their estimates.
And in looking at this estimate, one of the big items is the athletic court, or surfacing. They estimated sixteen hundred and it's eighteen thousand. So that was a big difference right there in doing the athletic court. I have a feeling, but.
That's a big, that's a big moves. Yeah, because if they had estimated sixteen thousand, that would have made it.
I think that was just prep work. I was still looking for the actual resurfacing.
Yes, it was just the prep work.
Which surprised me that the contractor says it was so much more for the prep work. So I, assuming that they believe that they just needed to clean the surface, i.e. sweep it off, get it prepared, that's why they estimated that. The person that bid at the project felt they must have to do a whole lot more, and that's why I said, it could be a difference of, there's only one bidder here. So it's hard to be like, take these numbers with a grain of salt, because I don't have multiple bidders to really look at to say. Because everybody bids a little differently, they put some of their money into this, and some of it into that, and it may not be directly that cost. They kind of shift it around and say, we put that all in this area.
Anything else on this? All right, that is disappointing, but moving on to number, item number six, discussion regarding the vacation, vacation. Of Sherman Street near Briggs Court.
I wanted to bring this to council's attention before it's in front of you next, your next meeting for a vote. Sherman Street, we have two of them in the city, one is paved over by the bowling alley on the west side of the city. One is an undeveloped right-of-way that connects Briggs Court to North Main Street. It's highlighted in blue up there, and then you see it, it has a little appendage that goes southwardly as well. You also have a copy of the plat map, this was all in your report too, so when you read your report. You got the gist of what was happening here. The aerial photo with the red marker on it, that homeowner bought that house last year. They would like to put up a new fence, they got a property survey done as they're getting ready to do the fence, because they want to know exactly where the property line is. And unfortunately, most of the existing fenced-in yard is in the right-of-way. The driveway to their garage, which is the structure on the left, the right side of that map, that aerial photo, is in the right-of-way. And when you vacate a right-of-way, you just draw the line right down the middle. And the properties on each side of that line, get that vacated area. So for this property, what you run into here is they're going to lose most of their yard. And that garage is going to get bisected more or less by property line, if we vacate all the way. Talking with the city attorney, first of all, I asked the property owner if they just wanted to let a sleeping dog lie, and the answer was no. I said, okay, we'll move forward with the vacation, and then you can talk to your neighbors, and hopefully you can buy that land from them, to make it part of your property. Talking to the city attorney, the best way for us to move forward is to vacate the Sherman Street right-of-way. All the way up to Briggs Court, the western line of Briggs Court extended. What that does is that will give the properties on each side their half, this property owner will still have to figure out their yard situation. And then for the driveway and the garage, that's in the Briggs Court right-of-way. We can enter into a license agreement with them, and we can license that right-of-way to them for the use of their, you know, driveway and structure. The downfall to that is, per your city charter, you can only enter into ten-year agreements on land. I am going to reach out to the property owner tomorrow to kind of, you know, walk through some steps with them again. Let then, we've already, we've been having multiple conversations for the past month on this. But I just wanted to make council aware that next, your next meeting, you're going to get some kind of. Resolution and agreement from the city manager's office that may look convoluted, as we're trying to thread this needle for this property owner. You have a handful of undeveloped streets like this or alleyways that, you know, just. Not sure what previous generations did when they were drawing lines on maps, but goofy.
That was before gummies too.
All right. We're good to move on? We're going, moving down to item number seven, discussion regarding the city of Alleghen's water shut-off policy.
So at your last meeting, staff believes that council stated or mentioned that they wanted to continue to discuss this. So we put it on the agenda for you this evening. And the staff report to you was a very generic, what am I going to call, you know, memo? That asked those two questions, or asked council to consider those two questions. And then we also included the original staff report from your previous meeting as well, so you would have all that data as well. And we have the slides behind this from that previous meeting as well, so if you want to focus on something, we can scroll down to that information. So yeah, I believe council just needs to, you know, talk about what you want to see happen with the water shut-offs. And what do you guys feel, you know, should happen with the fees that the city needs to fund our water operations?
The state is going to do something, aren't they? Isn't there a bill in discussion?
Yeah, elected officials are discussing something in Lansing.
Correct.
I have no idea if it's going to get out of house, or even make it to the governor's desk for signature.
Do you have information on that, Doug?
Yes, I do, it's Bill five forty-nine dash five fifty-four. If you would like, I can email it to all of council tomorrow. But yeah, it's, I kind of went over it last week.
Is it out of the subcommittee yet?
I do not know.
I guess that's where I'm going, the state bills, they are massaged and dissected and cut so many times before they get to the actual floor for a vote.
And date completed on here is October thirty-one or twenty-three, so I don't think it's actually gone to a vote, it's still in committee.
Yeah.
But the main focus of this is basically that it would create a fund that all communities have to pay into by adding a fee onto their water bills.
Similar to the insurance catastrophic fund that they had at one time.
Yes, yeah, the way I read it, it is two dollars per water meter would be added on. That money would be sent to the state then and distributed to communities that, for residents that did not pay their water bills. The way I read it, if a community creates their own system, and the state approves it, then they can essentially opt out of sending it to the state and keep it in their own community. I had a discussion with someone else, and they read it differently, and they said, no, the community can do it, but they still have to participate in the state program also. So I have not had a chance to reread it and, you know, reevaluate that. But the, the point of the program is, money would be collected some way, somehow, and sent, and used to pay. Water bills that are not being paid by the resident or owner.
Knowing from how quickly the state can move on some of these things, is that something that's going to be done in the next ten years of it, or?
It's, it's hard to say, I mean, this is all stemming from a couple of years ago with COVID, when they passed the rule that, you know, you could not do shut-offs while people were out of work. They're wanting to try and carry that on, because that mandate expired over a year ago. I don't know the exact date on it, but it was quite some time ago that that expired, and communities could go to do, could do shut-offs again.
Thank you.
In light of that, does anybody want to change our current shut-off policy at this point? Is it something that we want to move forward on, or we're, you know, me, I'm fine with where it's currently at. I understand water is a human right, but at the same point, you also have, we have to get paid for that utility. And the shut-offs are just one of those tools, and it's looking like we only shut after, shut off after about three months of non-payment, which is quite lenient. We could also address if water is a human right, why don't people are allowed to still stay on their own well? We tell them they have to join our water system. That we physically force them, if they don't, you know, during a house sale, if you don't change it, you can't sell your house.
The two conflicts I see right now, one is with this idea that we shouldn't be charging people, we should only be charging people for things that add value to their water service. So I think the delinquency fees are kind of in violation of that principle in my mind. At best, we associate them with shut-offs, and I don't think shut-offs add value to people's water service. The second one would be. The idea of water being a right, people are, we're compelling people to pay us, regardless of if they actually get the service or receive the service. So if they're paying us, if we're as a municipality saying, you've got to pay us no matter what, I think we ought to be providing them that service. If, if we were to compare it to the cable company, the electric company, you know, they can't force you, they can't put a bill in your name, they can't force you to buy that service. And then they can't force you to pay for that service and then shut it off, certainly. And that's the position we're in, as a municipality, we've said, you have to get the service, you can't opt out of it, it's not an optional thing. So if we're forcing people to pay no matter what every month, then we ought to, they have a right to what they paid for, we ought to be providing that service. So those are the two things, it's the delinquency fees, and then the shut-off, when we're still making people pay ready to serve.
You, you can opt out, but you have to remove the pipes.
That's overly restrictive, that's not an opt-out.
It is an opt-out, it's, you remove the pipes, you remove the service. You know, if I wanted to remove it, and then the problem becomes, our ordinance can also kick in forcing the connection, but I don't know how we would enforce it.
But, but if I'm in a position where I can't afford my water service for the next three months, and let's say I just wanted to buy gallons of water from the store and get by, and I can shower someplace else. I don't have the option to do that, I can do that with electricity, I can do that with cable, I can do that with gas, I can do that with internet, but I can't do it with water here. So we're forcing people in a position where they have to pay us every month. I don't think we can also then say, oh, well, you didn't pay us, now we're going to charge you an extra fifty dollars for the service of shutting off the service, and then continue to charge them.
You're speaking of the ready-to-serv fees that are, you're using the term force, but we also have a separate commodity charge, which is actual, the water going to their home. So when they do receive water, they are paying for that commodity. The ready-to-deserve is already built in, yes, I understand there are people that don't agree with that. But that is to keep our pipes maintenance, it's also to help with debt repayment, I mean, that's why that's built in there. So I think those are two separate points, actually. As far as like water shut-offs for me. I have a very difficult time with this, I want people to have water, I want them to be able to have water, yet I understand that we have a utility that needs to be funded as well. So I would be amenable to discussions on changing like the delinquency amount owed, when we do start having like shut-offs. Or when we have any delinquency fees placed, right now it's like fifty dollars. But I think that there does need to be charges for that, we have staff that are going door-to-door to try to get people to make these payments. We have staff going to do shut-offs outside of their regular business time, and we need to have compensation for that in some way. I don't know how else we get that except assessing fees. I don't know how else we get that except assessing fees and other utilities do that. That's just my opinion. So I would be able, I would be amenable to reviewing when those fees go into place as well as extending from maybe three months to a six month period for shut offs. But in that time, they would receive the delinquency fee if they were over a certain amount and then also a shut off fee if that goes to that. I mean, that's where I'm at with it. If there was a way to, I don't know how we recoup the money that we are not going to get for these services. And that's the sticking point for me. Um, we've got concerns about our fund balances already in the water and sewer department. And if we're bringing in less or ex, you know, revenue for the water that's being used, where are we making up this difference?
Yeah, and, and I mean, I'm, uh, I struggle with that as well. I mean, I, I'm the one that brought up, well, I guess we've, we talked, but I, I, I'm the one that brought up that I feel like we need to do away with our shut off fees. But I, we do have to answer the question of where, how we're paying for our utilities. The, the one thing you, that you just brought up, it's been brought up several times that we need to recoup our costs, uh, with delinquency fees because there's city staff that's going out and, but city staff is already being, if, if they're already on the clock, why do they need, why do we need to recoup the cost of them already, being, already being on the clock?
Cause they could be doing something else.
But, yeah, but how are we recouping that cost if they were doing something else? We're not, we're not because they're already on the clock. So I'm just being devil's advocate. Why do we, why do we need to recoup that cost and not other costs?
So would you say like no shut off fee, but I mean, are you advocating for no delinquency fee as well?
I'm trying to figure it out.
I mean, I could see no shut off fee unless it was after hours or on a weekend. With, and I don't know how often that occurs or if there's a way just to make sure that occurs during the week, during work time.
Isn't the shut off fee and the delinquency fee the same thing? There's no shut off. It's just delinquencies.
There's two fees.
There's a five percent interest.
Yeah, like a delinquency fee. That's like what I'm considering a delinquency fee.
Is the five percent is what she's saying. So she's saying that five percent is with the delinquency. I'm kinda fine with saying instead of doing a shut off, a dollar amount, it's just, hey, it's a seven percent delinquency. We don't bother with the shut off amounts. It's just part of our running costs and that's why we have the seven percent fee is to cover those.
Well, it's, it's really confusing the discuss, cause in the fee schedule, it's delinquency fee is the, when, when we, there's a five percent interest charge and then the delinquency fee is the fifty dollars or the hundred fifty if, if it's after hours. And that fee gets applied whether the shut off happens or not. So that shut off fee, I'm with you. I, maybe we say free shut offs for these people who we say need the shut off to help them. I'm not saying get rid of the five percent interest fee. I'm not touching that. I'm interested in that fifty dollars or a hundred fifty dollars when we give them the after hours treatment.
Well, that one they select, cause they would actually say, we want it turned on after hours and we tell them there's gonna be a fee for us to come out after hours to do it. So they can decide whether they wanna wait till the next business day during normal hours or to have, to have somebody come out at ten o'clock at night. So that one actually does have an added cost to the city because we're gonna have to pay somebody some overtime to come in just to turn on one water. So that, that fee I'm fine with. I'm fine with looking at the percentages and saying, we just do a percentage and we don't have the delinquency or the fifty dollar fee. And it's just a percentage. You're past due, you're getting charged this percentage instead of having two different ones. Cause it even, it makes a little confusing, I think, even to the end user like, what's this fee for and what's this fee for? It's just like, well, here's your late fee. And if you want us to come turn it back on after hours, it's gonna be a hundred dollars or the hundred and fifty dollars to come turn it back on. Now, the amount of time, I'm not sure, about six months. I was fine with three to four. Uh, the fifty dollar delinquency amount seems a little low to me considering our RTS fees have gone up over the years and we haven't really addressed that to see if we should bump that up. Cause one RTS will get you to half, over halfway there. The second RTS will get you past the fifty dollars.
And I agree with that. I would be fine with raising that threshold before that process starts, but.
Raising which?
Uh, right now, like the delinquency amount, it's anything like fifty dollars and one cent would, it would kick in.
Oh, gotcha.
But if we raise that to a hundred dollars, um, or I see, said even like one hundred or a hundred and fifty, which would, if the average water bill is sixty some dollars you said at the last meeting, I mean, that would be about a three month timeframe before you would get charged a overdue fee.
Has anybody paid attention to the repeat offenders? I mean, this is this, it's the same people month after month. It's not that they don't have the money to pay their bill. It's because they don't intend on paying their bill until they get this percentage of late added to their bill. You know, in a couple of cases, there may be someone who can't afford it. But if you look at the repeat offenders, and I'm sure the girls at the window can tell you or Tracy, how many letters and shut off notices go to the same addresses every month? Or every three months, you know? I don't see why we're, like Delora said, we're already in a deficit with our water and sewer.
Are we really in a deficit? I mean, are we like in the red on our water and sewer?
Do you know how much we got bonded out for water and sewer?
Yeah, for streetscape. I, I know, I'm, but I'm, I mean, I was kinda wondering about.
Oh, before our time on council. Our, our debt payments are very high and that's one reason we have that RTS fee is to help with debt.
Again, it's supposed to pay for that and it doesn't cover that at all.
But I mean, we're not really trying to use water shut offs to get out of debt here and get in the black for our water and sewer fund, right?
We're trying to have that for, make sure our operations can continue, that we're generating the revenue needed for operations. This is how I see our fees.
I view this, uh, it was always the same for me is it's, it's a tool to make sure people make their payments. The issue is if we just push it over onto the taxes, we gotta wait that amount of time and we still have bonding that we have to continue to carry.
Yeah, I'm, I, to be honest, now I can't stop thinking about how we're in deficit in our water and sewer funds. Like, are we really in the red on these?
Well, I mean, Dave, you've mentioned multiple times the concern you have with the fund balances right now for the water and sewer funds, so.
I'd heard we've got plenty of money when I brought them up.
Well, we've, oh, I think express some concern with where those fund balances are projected to be. But if, if we continue to decrease revenue and increase expenses, then those are gonna go down even further and we will find ourselves there. I think what Teresa was saying is, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't wanna speak for you, but that if you take into account the debt that we carry, we're in a deficit, not, not from year to year. We, we still have fund balance. I mean, we still have rainy day funds available, so we're not in the red.
So being that this isn't a time for action, I don't know if we wanna think about this cause our fee schedule comes up during our budgetary sessions and this could be one of those things that we can talk about during that as well. I think we've talked it out pretty well here in the meetings that we've had. So I don't know, do we wanna continue or anybody else have more?
So I, I mean, I, I don't wanna just keep chasing our tails, but then looking at these two questions, I think these two questions might be helpful just to get, to take the temperature of council. Like, let's just look at the first question and not to get into a huge discussion, but just to kinda go through, what does each council member wanna see happen with the water shut offs? What are, are there? I mean, I guess we're going, we could do away with them. We can keep them as they are or we can extend them. Like where, where are we at in those three? Can we just go down the line?
I'm fine like they are.
If the stars all aligned, I would like to see them stop, but I don't see that happening. So I would be willing to keep them as they are or extend timelines and increase, um, thresholds as far as where they begin accruing interest charges.
Yeah, I'm in favor of keeping them the way that they are and not changing anything. Seeing that the state is doing this, you know, and everything else. So I mean, that's, I don't know if that would help or hurt. Hopefully it would help to get rid of that twelve thousand dollars a year. Pardon?
People who pay their bills are gonna end up and pay anyway.
Well, they're gonna pay, you know, those that are gonna pay are gonna pay, so.
Exactly.
I don't know if that would increase or not. Since twenty-one, our delinquencies have gone down.
Right.
Which is a good thing.
I don't know. I'd be open to reforming it, extending it, offering free shut offs to people who, you know, are benefiting from that apparently. But, um, I'd be in favor of ending it too. My bigger concern is, um, you know, where, where, how are we setting these fees? And how are we spending money out of the water and sewer fund at this point? I, I think that seems like the more important discussion. And I, I, I get that people are concerned about the fund balances. There I am too. But I wanna make sure we align to that principle of we're just charging people for things that improve their water service. You know, like people have, need to have input. We need to consider that in how we're, it's, it's not like a normal business here. The people of the city of Alleghen own that business. The purpose of that business is to provide water, not make money. So having that alignment, I think is really important.
Mike?
I'm good keeping it just how it is.
Okay.
I'm fine with where it is and considering the state's looking at doing some changes, I don't see doing much on this unless if we hear something else, but, you know, before our strategic budget sessions. You know, if all of a sudden they come with something, we may just go, well, so that's all, that, that changes everything, so we're gonna be changing anyways. But I'm fine with where they're at. And with Delores too on that, if we wanna look at the levels, that's fine to look at the, where we hit certain levels at the fifty dollars or is it seventy-five or is it a hundred? And whether we charge a shut off or we just charge a higher percentage for late. Though, you know, having a late fee is something that's there as a tool, same as shut offs.
So by my count, we've got four say, that say, they'd like to, they're fine with keeping it where it is. However, there does seem to be some sentiment about maybe tweaking it and maybe seeing if there's a, a way to make it more, I don't know, humane, more. So maybe that's the direction we should begin to put our efforts into, that we can make some progress.
We have a so, whole study session, I believe, um, dedicated to fees coming up soon.
So that'll be.
Doug, do you have any plan to bring in that amazing spreadsheet that figures out the rates and the fees? Or is that something like council members can meet with you to see? Uh, we at WUSC were privileged to walk through that.
I'm, I'm always open if, if a council member wants to come and ask questions, talk, um, review, you know, things with me or with me and Tracy if it's, you know, more budget related, um, we're always open, um, for discussion. You know, Trace and I started today on reviewing of, of the water utilities budget. Next step is we'll be starting to put information into the rate making software. You'll see something coming up here shortly on the, uh, council agenda for another review. So, you know, it, it's, we're looking at all of it, um, as we're coming up, so. You know, right now we're just, you know, as the slide show, says, you know, we're looking for council input and direction, um, what you would like us to do.
Thanks, Doug. Anything else on water? All right, item number eight, review of council agenda. Any changes, additions that we need to, I know there was an amended, amended, uh, yeah, so we'll have to have a motion. Is that right? Yeah, please do. All right. If there's nothing else, we'll adjourn the meeting at six forty-six and we'll reconvene at seven o'clock for a regular session. Seven o'clock, we will call the regular session to order. Can we get a roll call, please, Michaela?
Yes. Councilmember Redding.
Here.
Councilmembers Eater.
Seated.
Councilmember Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Andrus.
Here.
Councilmember Galloway.
Here.
Mayor Protim Hands.
Present.
And Mayor Byrd.
Here.
You have a forum.
Thank you. All right. If you would like, you can rise and say the pledge of allegiance with us. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Item number four, four A, approval of the regular council meeting agenda for February 12th, 2024. We do have an amend, an amended version. Can I get a motion to accept the amended agenda?
I move we accept the amended motion.
I'll support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Item number five, A, approval of the study session meeting minutes from January 22nd, 2024 council meeting. Are there any issues, any changes? No, if none, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the study session many minutes as presented.
I'll support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Item passes. Item five B, approval of the regular meeting minutes from January 22nd, 2024 council meeting. Any changes? No additions.
I move we approve the meeting minutes.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Uh, item number eight, A, renewal of a motion to adopt ordinance 510 to repeal chapter 13, historic preservation of the city of Allegan code of ordinances.
So I would introduce this agenda item and then pass it off to the council for their discussion. Mayor Protim Hands and councilmember Andrus has requested that ordinance 510, which was last reviewed last year during May 22nd, 2023 meeting, be renewed. At that time, it failed on a three to three vote. As you saw in the staff report, we have a legal memo from our city attorney that this is the appropriate process if council wanted to, I'm going to use the word revisit this ordinance, even though the technical term is renew this ordinance or renew the motion. So with that, Mayor Protim Hands and councilmember Andrus requested that this come back and I'm going to pass it off to one of those two or councils discussion.
Do, uh.
And for clarification, this does not require a public hearing, but per council rules, the mayor has the ability to open the floor for public comment if they sees fit.
And I, I will do that, but I'd like to give councilmember Andrus and/or Mayor Protim Hands a chance to say anything before we open a more discussion.
Yeah, I wanted to renew this because it seems like we don't have any appetite as a council to enforce the historic district. We're currently looking at the fill in or overlay. Infill, but that really is very limited on its capabilities. It has no demolition, so it's not really going to replace this. It's more of if we decide we want to have this overlay, which I oppose personally because it just, depending on what the terms of it are, because it just becomes the same thing as a historic district, just a little bit less.
I'm going to interject right here. Uh, the city clerk pointed something out in the attorney's memo. There has to be a motion made to revisit before discussion. So I apologize.
Thank you, Michaela.
I'll make a motion to revisit ordinance 510.
I'll support.
Now, do we need to vote on the motion or now we have discussion?
You can vote on this, but if someone wants to discuss the motion to revisit, they can discuss it.
It might make sense to offer reasons why we're revisiting it before we vote on revisiting it.
Do you want to finish your comments?
So, yeah, the, the comment is I'm revisiting this because we have no appetite as a council to actually enforce and use the full powers of the historic district to take people to court and force them to remediate or change things back to the way that they're supposed to be. That we're not really using the historic district the way it was intended. And I see that none of the council really has the appetite to go to court on these things. The overlay is something that is a separate matter to this. It's not a replacement. It's something that even if this historic district was gone tomorrow, it's not all of a sudden going to be willy-nilly out there. People that want to keep their historic houses historic are still going to keep their historic houses historic. The overlay doesn't even necessarily maintain that the historic same standards. And also from the, all the discussions we had where reality, I, from the beginning, all I was looking for was a reduction of it, the, the district size. We said, well, that's not something that we can do, so we'd probably have to start over with new districts or doing a new survey if we so wanted to do that or if we wanted to use an overlay. And I'm open to an overlay. It just depends on what's all included in that overlay. So then that, that I think is in our future discussion still. That's why I wanted to renew this.
Do you have anything to add to that, Dolores?
Sure. Um, I am currently the council liaison to the Historic District Commission. I have been to two meetings, but the first meeting, we had Alan Higgins from SHPO present. He presented information that we as a full council had kind of been privy to from our joint session with the HDC. Uh, but then he did get into some other specifics that we were not familiar with. Um, I would like to revisit this because I do feel, um, that there has been sufficient due diligence by the Historic District Commission. Uh, this has come up now for the third time, uh, but going back to my first year on council in 2018, uh, when councilmember Perrigo was a representative, um, then we had councilmember McKenzie, who brought forward from HDC, um, a request to dissolve. Uh, we had, um, a study group under councilmember Redding, that that was one of their three recommendations they came forward with. But after our joint meeting, it, it became clear that they were leaning towards, or at least to me, um, dissolution. And now this is the third time that this committee is coming forward with that. Um, the way that the HDC is working presently is not the way that it should be legally. And again, like I will reiterate, councilmember Hands has said, uh, the HDC members do not feel like they want to enforce and we have not felt from council that they want to enforce as well. So, um, at this point, this seems to be the best action after multiple years of information coming forward from the commission and from discussion amongst council.
So it seems like the problem is not the HDC, it's the enforcement of the ordinances.
Um, it's also, um, just from my understanding, and you were on that commission as well, councilmembers Eater, so you can tell me what was discussed during your time there. But the HDC has approved almost every application that has come forward to them, um, trying to be fair and equitable, trying to have people make changes to their homes. And that's not the way that a functioning HDC should work. They should require per our ordinance following the standards and, and we're not doing that. So it, it, I think it's an issue from all sides, honestly. I, I think it's a vicious cycle and a vicious circle that we're in. And I don't think that the HDC feels that there is a way to fix that. I haven't heard anything from council on a way to fix that. So that's kind of where I feel we're at.
I think this is a little premature. I've expressed my opinion that I don't think anything should be abolished before something else is in place. Again, you're doing this. You're putting something, getting rid of it, and then you're out here dangling stuff with nothing to be taking its place. Get it in place first and then abolish it.
And I do understand that, but I will be honest, I have heard from more than one resident of the city who says they are just not going to go forward with any applications to the HDC. Because why? If they don't, there's nothing that's going to happen to them. So I, and like I mentioned before, in one month, um, Jason Raymaker had said that he saw 12 properties in the city that were doing work that had not come forward with applications. Um, so that is a huge issue. And right now, we also need to understand that HDC is down two members. Jason Raymaker, who has been a member for years, chose not to be reassigned, and then we had a resignation. So this commission already struggles with having a quorum when there are applications, uh, which we didn't have the last two months, um, or last month. So we then will need people to fill in and it's, again, this vicious circle with this group.
Is there any way it can be sped up to get the overlay process taken care of? Joel?
Yeah, I mean, you can pass an emergency ordinance if you feel this is a true emergency and that has a one reading instead of two readings, but it still has to go through the planning commission.
My concern is, again, enforcement, the ordinances are there, but nobody seems to enforce them. Uh, then that to me is the problem. It's not the historical district, that's not the problem, it's enforcing it. No one wants to do it.
Well, the city and, and city council has said, we, we, first of all, don't want to spend tens of thousands of dollars taking residents to court for doing improvements to their homes. We don't want to put tens of thousands of dollars back on them saying, well, you have to remove what you've done because your windows are the wrong size or they're vinyl windows and not wood windows or, uh, or the lady that we just had, had her roof replaced that changed the roof line that was not in accordance with HDC, but we're not going to tell that lady she can't have a new roof because she really needed it. So, I mean, all of those reasons. And again, these are all conversations that we've had and it's, it is, it's, it's frustrating, but, you know, this. had, and it's, it is, it's, it's frustrating, but, you know, this, uh, I know that, uh, Councilmember Morgan, that you're feeling, uh, that this is rushed, but, uh, you know, we have been talking about this for a very, very long time.
I have not.
Well, since you've been on council, we've been talking about it.
Correct. It's only a year.
Still a long, fairly long time, this discussion.
That's what I mean. If they could just get going, and I don't know what they mean by an emergency thing. It's been a year they've been talking about doing this. Um, the planning commission is sitting there. They have the ability to sit down and take care of it, but they don't seem to.
Well, we are in the process of working on, on the new ordinances and overlays and infill ordinances so that those can be covered, but we wanna take our time and do it right.
The thing is, even if you bring them forward to council, that's not a guarantee we'll approve those overlays. They may just come to council and we may just quash it, or say, we don't like how this is written, send it back. Right now, we have an HDC committee that sits there and feels like they can't really enforce anything 'cause we're not gonna actually go and do anything to enforce it. So we have them working on things and feeling like they're not really need it, henceforth, people probably aren't gonna wanna show up to meetings if they're like, well, this doesn't really make much of a difference. Um, I don't know. I, that's why I brought the renewal forward is, it seems like, let's just break away from it, and if we wanna go to the overlay, let's go to the overlay. Let's see how that looks. I don't think having a, not one in place is gonna cause detriment to the community.
So let's vote on the, the motion on the floor to, to open this up, and then we can open it up to public comment, 'cause I know we have some folks here that would like to, to say things, at least I'm assuming. Uh, so.
If we vote, it's over then.
No, this is just a, this is the motion to re- reopen it, to, that, so that we can. So we're not, we're not voting to approve this. We're voting to reopen, uh, the renewal, or to re- uh, to renew it.
Just to offer my point of discussion before we vote on that topic, I, I still feel like the survey is the most important piece of this, to have a well-informed path forward. Um, and I, I'm, I've talked to Alan Higgins again after the last meeting. There was some concern that we would have to add properties if they were identified as historic through the survey. He assured me there's a separate process. The historic survey really just informs us of what the historic assets are in the community and why they're historic, and helps us define and understand that as a community. Then there's, uh, um, a process after that to actually reform based off the information. So we would have to consider all the information that's given in the survey, but it would not force us to make changes based on it. That's a separate action. So for me, I, I think the survey is the best thing for the community. I think it adds a lot of value. I think it would be great if we could get that done using CLG grants. I don't know if we've missed the deadline at this point. That would be really disappointing. Um, but that, that's the piece I'm still looking for, to make the most informed decision to move forward.
Thanks, Dave. All right, so we have, uh, it's been moved and seconded again. What we are voting on is just whether or not to renew this discussion, uh, and, and to bring this back to the floor. We're not voting to approve it. So having said that, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
The motion passes. So, uh, I will open up the, uh, public comment. If you are, wanna speak on this issue, you can come to the podium and state your name. You have three minutes.
I'm fine if you have a question, but.
Okay, you're just here for questions? No one else?
If no one else.
Sure.
Uh, apologize for my appearance, but, uh, I was just doing some plumbing that, uh, turned out to be a little bit more involved than I expected. Uh, I'm Jim Ludema. I own the Robinson Manor at seven oh one Marshall, and I've been involved in some of the previous meetings as far as the HDC is concerned, uh, community meetings where we discussed alternatives, um, reasons why we didn't feel the HDC, uh, was necessary. Um, personally, I just see it as another level of restrictions on, uh, it, it increases cost to anybody who's in the area. And for me in particular, we did a second floor remodel, and we weren't able to add new, um, windows because the windows that would have been approved would have been prohibited as far as cost is concerned. Um, I wanted to prepare a little bit more, but I was rushing here after getting doused with water. But, uh, the issues that I've had in the past with the HDC has been delays. Uh, in particular, when we were doing the second floor remodel, um, because of the approval process, they weren't able to get quorums a couple of times. Um, it's more than just enforcement. It's, it's really, um, I was put back three months on my project, um, which I factored in one to two months of delay, um, and that pushed us to the point where some of the weddings that we had scheduled, uh, we had to, uh, be pretty creative with, uh, before we could actually get approval to move, to go ahead. Another issue is inconsistency. Um, the chairperson of the HDC, uh, when I went to one of them to get a deck approved, had said, he sat back here, talked to the HDC 'cause he wanted something approved. Well, he was gonna get metal framing on his windows approved. There was some question from the HDC for him, but his comment was, it's my building and I, um, because I'm the owner, I, uh, am more than likely want to take care of my own property, um, because it behooves me to take care of my property for the value, correct? You don't need an extra layer of authority to try to force somebody to be compliant with, uh, I don't know, explain why I say inconsistencies. I had a previous, uh, request for railing heights, because I had to meet code for railing heights. The initial request was to take some metal bars and raise them up, which I had seen online, and I had some examples, and that was not approved because it was not historical. I waited just long enough for a few new people to get on the board and, uh, proposed the exact same thing. They didn't know, and, uh, they thought it was the greatest idea they've ever seen. So inconsistency, cost, enforcement, and at the meeting that we had, um, where there, there were community members, primarily it was, um, them saying, we understand that there's a benefit to the historical side of things, but the benefit would be more the education of people coming into the community as opposed to penalties or enforcement for having a historical building. If somebody wanted to build it to original historical, uh, to look original, they could, but then you had this committee that the city has that could then educate them and help them along. That was the comment from within the meeting. Um, the other thing is, am I three minutes over yet? Okay.
Probably.
The last thing, um, the building that I have is historical, but from what era? You tell me which era the Old Elk's Lodge is from. Yeah, I mean, nobody can tell me. There's the nineteen fifties. It, it built in nineteen oh nine. There's some nineteen twenty features. There's stuff built in two thousands. What am I supposed to, uh, what is correct? And nobody can tell me that, so that's my comment.
Thank you.
I don't know. Is this the only public comment?
Uh, no, there'll be more. There, there'll be an open public comment in just a minute. Uh, so is there anyone else? So I have a question for Mrs. Raymaker, since she's here in the audience representing the, uh, HDC. So since I've been on council and, uh, Delora, uh, alluded to this, there has been three different occasions that I'm aware of that the HDC has told us that we should disband the HDC. Is that still the feeling of the, the current HDC?
Uh, sure. So I can only sp- speak to the last one because I've only been on the board since July, I think, of last year. But yes, that, that would be our majority consensus. I will say there's one HDC member who's still on the board but has had, um, long-term health issues and hasn't been to a meeting since October, so that does not express that board member's, uh, wishes, but the rest of us agreed. And that was before Jason's term ran up, and that was before Rosie, um, resigned to join a different committee. And our, our reasoning for that is essentially, um, as, as Jim said, we can't make everyone happy. I know that's not our job, but we can't enforce the rules if there's not gonna be any penalty to them, and we can't be consistent if we're not gonna enforce the rules, and it's just this vicious cycle. So yes, that is our, our current, um, suggestion that the HDC be dissolved. Um, and I know there was some discussion at planning committee about other things. I attended one of those planning committee sessions in the audience, and it, um, as Mayor Pro Tim Hands mentioned, it didn't seem like there was a great alternative, especially since it didn't include the demolition ordinances, which seemed to be the major sticking point for a lot of people, that those should be there, but, yeah.
All right. Any other questions for Sarah while she's up here? All right. Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll close public comment. And, uh, if there's... Do we have any more discussion before we, before I ask for a motion?
I can appreciate the frustration that people have with this. Um, I'm really just still looking for that study so that we can understand what the historic qualities are of the districts and the properties, give us an opportunity to downsize, um, based off that study. Um, even if we end up dissolving the whole thing, having that information so that it can be provided to homeowners, um, you could almost think of it as a matter of respect, right? Like, people bought and maintained their homes for a period of time under this historic district with an agreement with the city that this ordinance was in place. That was a long time ago. Not everybody was part of that agreement that currently owns it, and I understand that, and I appreciate that fact, but we've got an ordinance in place that says we're gonna do a survey before we make decisions about these historic districts. Um, and the ordinance also says that we're gonna have an architect, a member of the Historic Society, a member of the Planning Commission on this board. We're gonna give them a budget. They've been starved of resources, and I don't think it's fair to bash on HDC or members or post-members in this process. It's just the place we ended up here out of really neglect and, and starving of resources. To get out of it, again, for me, I'm looking for that survey so we can make an informed decision. We can respect the process. We can show respect to the people who've made the investment over the years, knowing and enjoying and appreciating the historic district, um, and just make the best decision going forward. So I, I'm not in support of the way this is being done, but I appreciate and understand why people are coming to the conversation at that point.
Great. Any, uh, any other discussion? Do you have any other discussion?
You already know mine.
I just heard some discussion happening. I didn't know if you needed to.
It was misunderstood. We are actually voting now to dissolve it?
Yes.
It's essentially revisiting the second reading of this ordinance, so.
From last, uh, May.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion, and then we can discuss after it's on the floor, um, to adopt ordinance five ten to repeal chapter thirteen.
Second. So we, uh, we can have discussion now if anybody needs it. Yeah. I would once again stress that this has been a long, drawn-out discussion, um, thoughtful, careful, passionate, a lot of research, a lot of time, that we are really grateful that folks from the HDC and council members who served on the HDC put a lot of time into this. Um, but in my, uh, from me watching this and listening to reports coming back, it always ends up in the same place, and it's right here where, where we are, and had, uh, fate not intervened, uh, this would have, this vote would have taken place and passed nine months ago. Um, but, uh, yeah, I, I've said before, this is the third, you know, we've had three times the HDC came to us and said, we, this should be dissolved, and at what point do we listen to the HDC? And I, that's where I am at. That's how I have come to this point.
And I will just add that if a group of community members want to revisit having historic districts, they are more than welcome to begin a survey anew. Um, Mr. Higgins from Shippo had said, usually you have to be out of that for a year before you can get back in, so that's always an option if there is a community desire to have this back. Uh, but in the meantime, doing the survey that Councilmember Reading mentioned is gonna take two or more years, and then we have to repeal, redo, and we're looking at probably three or four years before any change actually happens. And in the, in that meantime, the HDC would have to continue to function as it is, and it's broken, so.
Yeah. And Planning Commission will continue on its overlay and zoning changes, even though that's imperfect. It will certainly shore up some of the things. So we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. So all in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
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 Motion passes. Thank you all. All right. Item eight B, second reading, public hearing, and adoption of ordinance five one seven to amend the use table in section four oh two point zero one of the City of Allegan zoning ordinance to allow for operation of certain marijuana processing businesses by special use within the C two zoning district. Joel?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this evening is your second reading, and then you also have to have a public hearing for this as well. Um, at your previous meeting, you, uh, reviewed the ordinance. During that time, uh, it was recommended or requested that we amend it to tighten the type of processing that can occur. So in the staff report, that ordinance without additional language was in there, and the way it reads is for processors in the C two general commercial zoning district, the use of or storage of chemical solvents, including but not limited to volatile organic compounds, is prohibited. Only non-solvent extraction methods are permissible. The restrictions in the sub, subparagraph do not apply to processors in the M one manufacturing district. So I believe that language satisfies council's request at your previous meeting. As mentioned, this does require a public hearing, and then you may vote after the public hearing.
All right, so, uh, I will open the public hearing at seven thirty-one. If anyone would like to come up and speak on this issue, please come up to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-one. All right, now we can move into discussion on this.
The only last question I had on this was, this has all the same restrictions as far as ventilation and all the requirements that we have for our current marijuana distributors and grow facilities, correct?
Correct, yeah. So all this addresses is the use and what zoning districts that use can be located in.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, see, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
Passes. Item eight C, second reading, public hearing, and adoption of ordinance five eighteen to amend chapter thirty veget- to amend chapter 30 vegetation of the City of Alleghen Code of Ordinances.
So this ordinance regulates our vegetation, more specifically, the trees and placement of trees and the, or the types of trees in the City of Alleghen. You had your first reading. Right before that first reading, we received a communication from the Alleghen Conservation District asking us to expand the number of trees and base it off the Michigan Department of Natural Resources list. They also asked that we put the bug, the butt, uh, mote, the scientific name, the scientific name of the tree instead of just the common name. So that has been updated. We have shared this list with our Department of Public Works. They oversee our park trees, our street trees. They reviewed it. They're okay with this. We then shared this with the Alleghen Conservation District. They reviewed it. They're very happy that we took their suggestion and were running with it. So this requires a public hearing, and then after the public hearing, you can vote on it.
All right, I will open a public, public hearing at 7:33. If you would like to speak on the topic of ordinance 518, chapter 30 vegetation, please come to the podium. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 7:33. All right, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to adopt ordinance 518 to amend chapter 30 vegetation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. All right. Item number nine, public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone with items not on the agenda. Please come to the podium and state your name. You have three minutes.
I'm Patrick Rouse. I've never been to a city council meeting. It's kind of interesting seeing how it works. I've just been having a relentless problem with my landlord since September. And I thought I'd bring it to your guys' attention that they, it seems like the neglect of his properties here in town and even in the historical district has been kind of bad. And it's just been a thing to try to get, to HUD, to go through with any kind of inspection through our, our local establishment, the CMH. I managed to get a HUD inspection and turn that over to the building inspector. And I do believe there is a deeper issue with the structure that, I mean, just in my apartment alone from what I've seen. And it's, it's not good. It's affecting my health at this point. That's why I stepped up here for public safety because, I, it's, I know I have differences with my neighbors. Everybody does, but it also concerns them as well. And it's just, it's, they cut the red tape to get a mold inspector in there, a building inspector. I mean, during the HUD inspection, my light fixture almost exploded in the bathroom when she put the grounding tester in there. I don't know what else to say about this. Maybe I just, I said, bring it to your guys' attention. I wanted to come in and sit in the council and see how it was done.
Mr. Rouse, just for the record, what's your address?
My address is 543 Trowbridge Street, apartment C. I've, I've done some public records checking. I can't find any inspections. I know he's due for an inspection for the rental on the property. He's probably been due for a while. And there's other properties in the historical district itself that have had issues.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I believe, I believe so. All right, is there any other public comment? Matt, come on forward.
Good evening. Matt Adams, representing Tilt today, 118 Brady Street. Just want to say thank you to city staff, Joel Parker, Tracy Mayerberg, for joining us at a ribbon cutting back on January 30th, first of all. Secondly, I'd like to thank members of city council and city staff as well for supporting Tilt. I personally visited with several of you when you've been in. And thank you for supporting a new, local, small business. I appreciate that. And then finally, I want to thank city council and city staff as a whole for having the vision and courage to turn an unused space in the back of the Regent Theater into what became the Regent Arcade. And now we have another new business in there. And then the Regent Arcade has become Tilt, which already has been very successful. Just recently was able to expand to seven days a week. We've created over 20 jobs at our location. And due to our unique combination of having a restaurant, bar, ice cream pinball, and a great outdoor patio, it's really become a unique destination, not only just for Alleghen, but for West Michigan and the region as a whole. So we look forward to continuing to grow and grow with Alleghen. So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Anyone else for public comment? All right, moving along. Item 10A, a request from Alleghen District Library.
I do not believe anyone from the library is present. The request was in your packet. They are looking to reserve the Griswold for two events. One of the events is a, let's scan this real quick, some kind of dance they're going to do there. And then the other one deals with their, their winter concert series with the Brass Collective. Are they asking for free use?
Free use, correct.
So they're asking for free use. It does take staff time for this, the Brass Collective. We provide the sound, so we do have staff there for that aspect.
There's also a Friday night rehearsal for the Saturday night performance that requires staff time for that as well.
Is that, we're good?
Yeah.
What I see in there, it says free or reduced rate.
I just see that this was for their dance classes in May and August. They weren't speaking to the concert series yet?
Okay.
Am I reading that?
No, you're correct. The letter just addresses the one event. I know when we had communications with the representative from the library, both events were, were talked about, and I know, I note as well that they thank the city council for use of the Griswold for that Alleghen Brass Collective concert that just happened in December. So I think that's where our mix-up was coming in. But yeah, you are correct. Councilmember Anders, this is an ask for use of the Griswold for that dance recital, dance performance, I should call it.
So that's not going to require, this says it doesn't require any staff time, except opening the door?
That's correct.
Okay. So they're not going to need sound, light, any of that? Okay.
Any discussion on this? So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request from the library for free use of the Griswold banquet room for their May and August dance classes.
I have support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. Item 10B, request from the Alleghen County Agricultural Society.
So this is a similar request we get each year from the Alleghen County Agricultural Society, which is the Alleghen County Fairgrounds. In the memo, you see that they're requesting for the parade to occur on Monday, September 9th, start downtown, and then make their way to the grandstand. Their concerts, they always ask for a lot of concerts, but they usually just end up with the concerts during the actual fair and then the signage that they place around downtown. And then Sari Miller is out of the country right now on vacation, so that's why she is not here. But we wanted to bring this tonight to just get it done.
All right. So can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. Item 11B1, request to approve accounts payable and payroll. Peter?
As requested, the city council accounts payable in the amount of $478,737.68 and payroll in the amount of $130,079.49 for a total disbursement of $608,817.17. Motion to approve.
So... It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Is there no discussion on it?
Do we need a discussion? Do you have discussion?
I have a few questions. The Kugular Property Services for 293182?
Yeah, check 7376.
I don't have the check number.
So in the report, it says the check number is the first column.
Well, I have this paper right here, so...
Oh, okay. So yeah, on page 28 of the packet, it's check number 7376. It has the description, 109 Locust Rehab. I don't know what paper you have because the full report has this.
Yeah, but what is that for? What?
Yeah, 109 Locust Rehab. That is a rental rehab program through the state of Michigan, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. The property owner received a grant to rehab and create two apartments.
City is the fiduciary?
We are the pass-through, correct.
Okay. I wasn't sure what One America was.
Tracy, you want to handle that one?
One America is one of our benefits providers, does our disability insurance, our short-term disability, long-term disability, life insurance.
And then Consumer Energy, it was a land lease rental? What?
That's for the bike trail, the Michigan Mountain Bike Association. The property that the, the mountain bike goes, trail goes through. We have to lease, or we have to pay consumers for that lease that we have with them to, so that we can have that bike trail. It's a, one time, it's annual. What is it? It's a hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Yep.
The Wanderers Concrete Truck Brush Pole?
That one, I do not know what that one is.
Tracy, that is check number 7403 Wanderers Concrete Company Truck Brush on Pole. It is for $50.
7403? I'll look it up.
Now, you get, you have your BSNA open? Thank you. Are there other questions or comments from the whole of the council on this action item?
There's a UB refund on there with several of those?
Yep. So every month, if somebody moves out of their property and they have a deposit down on their account, when Danielle finalizes their account and they get the last reading, they get refunded, whatever doesn't get applied to their bill.
So that's a water bill?
Yep. Yep, utility billing refund.
Okay. And the law firm, can I get a breakdown of time and day emailed to me on the billing?
Of just this one bill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the...
Is it, is this a long list, Mike?
Is that a problem?
Yeah. This is stuff that could be done by email outside of this.
Okay, I'll just go blind on everything then?
I'm not asking you to do that. I'm asking you to do this before between.
Go on with it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. Item D11, request to approve the water utilities agreement between the City of Alleghen and Alleghen Township. This is Doug?
Doug Swers.
I'm sorry.
I'm with you, my friend.
So I've been working with the township for quite some time so that they can adopt water and sewer ordinances that were substantially identical to the cities. They have done that. The last step was to update the agreement between the city and the township for water and sewer services provided from the city to the township. Township currently has two sewer districts, a southeast one and a northwest sewer district. Plus, there are some township residents that what we call on border streets, streets that are pretty much split down the center, one side being city residents, one side being township residents, that the township residents have access to water and/or sewer from the city. So the agreement pretty much outlays how the city and the township handle the utilities together. So last week, Thursday, township had a special meeting to approve and sign. So now they're asking council to review and approve also.
Any questions for Doug on this?
They had to...
Don't make them long questions.
Excuse me? Councilmember Eater, we can have a discussion after this if you have an issue with me.
Doug, there was some concerns one time about some of the homes that were way set back from our sewer lines. Have that been addressed?
Yes, that was addressed in the, in their ordinance.
In their ordinance, but ours too?
No, ours is as it stands. They have passed their ordinance that anyone in the sewer districts, that there's a three, three-step that they will be connected to it, to the sanitary sewer. Point of sale, a failure of their septic system, or at the owner's discretion. So at some point, they will be connecting, but there is no mandatory connect within a certain time.
Because there was one that is going to cost him like $30,000 to hook up because he was set back so far from the...
Correct. I believe the property referenced is not in a sewer or water district, so there is no mandatory connection for him.
Right off River Street?
He is in the township. Yep. The township cited back to county and state code that says if a septic system fails and they're within a reasonable bound, a reasonable distance of a sanitary sewer...
So that was addressed then?
Yep.
That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Anything else for Doug? All right, can I get a motion?
So move.
All support?
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item 11D2, request to authorize a purchase order for Baker Tilly for the financial services review of the drinking water fund in the amount of $16,900.
Part of our DWM grant, the asset management portion of it has a financial advisor to look over the water fund and the rate structure and then basically review it and then provide information, documentation on how that fund is doing and projections going out. They typically do like a 10-year projection for that fund, including rate analysis. With the, the water fund on the DWM grant, that is covered 100%. So essentially, it will be paid for.
Doug, do you know when that would be completed?
Once approved, we'll start sending Baker Tilly the information. Um, once approved, we'll start sending Baker Tilly the information. Andy Campbell, who will be the CPA working on it, he actually worked on ours several years ago when it was done with the Saw Grant for the sewer side and then the next year on the water side. Um, he knows what our budget season is and his goal is to get it done during our budget season.
How serendipitous. Wonderful, thank you.
Doug, is this a requirement under the DWM grant that we do this?
It is something that with the asset management plan, it is not a requirement, but it's highly recommended by Eagle that reviews are done periodically.
It, it, it seems like this is overdue, so thank you for bringing this to us. I think it's been more than ten years since we did our last sort of external assessment.
Water or sewer was done in two thousand sixteen and water was done in two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen, okay.
Yep.
Um, but either way, I think this is great. How will we get rate payer input in this process?
I'm, uh, what do you mean by rate payer input?
Like, so I, I'm anticipating that we'll see an increase in rates, people will probably react to that. How will we make sure the rate payers have input on making sure that they're charged for the right things?
This is not a, uh, census of what the rate, of what the rate payers want. This is just looking at our needs, our wants, our current debt, our current O and M, and then what rates should be to maintain that and to do, uh, appropriate asset management and, you know, CIP programs that council wants to happen in the water fund. Um, with this, I've already talked with Andy. Um, part of it will be, uh, presenting to council, but also, uh, the possibility of presenting different rate programs. So obviously, we, what we do right now is how we do it. He'll present that way, he can present other options. Um, you know, if council wanted to do with RTS, or do away with RTS, or reduce RTS, what would that look like? What would it change, how would it change commodity? You know, so he, he will provide that for us. It does not provide input, or he doesn't go out and solicit input from the rate payers.
We don't have any way to bring in like a committee of community members or any input from rate payers on how we're?
I've never seen that done in one of these before, no.
Well, we have a mechanism for getting township input now that we've got this agreement.
So with the township, um, the, the agreement allows, says that the treatment of water and/or sewer will be the same rate for everybody. So what it basically says is when we treat water, treat sewer, it doesn't matter if it comes from five feet down the road or five miles down the road. But if the transmission of the water or sewer can be shown to co, to charge a different rate or cost a different rate, then we can charge the township residents at a, at a different rate. That may be looked at this, but it's also a matter of bringing in an engineer, um, to look at it also at the, the pumping rates, the pumping distances. So.
So I'm looking at the agreement, um, rate fees and charges determined on a cost of service basis using a rate methodology approved annually by the city, but then the township has the right to review and comment on the methodology.
Correct.
Is that just, if they hear about it, they can come?
Yeah, basically, I mean, we haven't really, we've, we've changed our rate, our, our costs, but we haven't changed how we do it. So, you know, they know what our rates are, um, if they have questions, they can ask us, but because our methodology has not changed, they have not questioned, you know, how we charge township versus city.
Doug, this isn't actually changing any of our rates, correct? It's just giving us an advisement of what they should be when they come back.
Correct.
We then will make a decision and if we want to have a public hearing or get community feedback, we can do that at our choice.
Correct. This will just, this is looking at the water fund, um, what debt we have, what O and M we have, what capital projects. It will do a, up to a ten-year projection and then at the bottom, it will say recommended rate change.
And the, the last question I have was, I know when the, the next item on the agenda wasn't in the budget. Was this actually in the budget or was this not in the budget?
This, this was identified under the DWM grant when we put in the grant application, um, this was figured into the amount we asked for.
Sounds good.
And the DWM only covers drinking water side, so.
Thank you.
And just a, a real quick question, as far as like what council member writing was saying, we hold public hearings for our budgets. So that would give rate payers an opportunity to, to come forward with any concerns.
I was just curious about this particular process. I hope that's okay that I was asking about that, okay?
I wasn't quite sure if you were just wondering how we got like input from, from residents, but.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the budget process and those. I was looking at that process of, okay, how do we, how do we set these rates? How do we go through all that? I know there was the WUSC committee before. I was curious if there's another committee and now the township is a player in the process. So really questions particular to that process?
All right, any other questions on this? Can I get a motion?
So move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Motion passes. Item eleven-D-three, review to, uh, review of a purchase order for Baker Tilly for financial services review of the sanitary sewer fund in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
Pretty much the same as the water side, except this was not budgeted for, so that's why it is a review instead of a request.
All right. Any questions on the sewer side?
Said sewer was done last twenty-seventeen?
Twenty-sixteen, I believe, and water was one year afterwards, twenty-seventeen.
Or coming up to about ten years.
Anything else?
Make a motion that we approve?
All support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Uh, eleven-E, Public Works, eleven-E-one, request to, what's that? Uh, request to authorize the purchase of road salt through my deal for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five winter season in the amount of forty-two thousand dollars.
Every March, the state asks for orders from municipalities throughout the state so that they can gather the order together and put the bid out. Uh, we're asking for, once again, order three hundred tons early delivery, three hundred tons backup for six hundred ton total.
All right.
Um, Doug, I know that we haven't had a super snowy season.
What, me?
We haven't had a super snowy season where we've needed to use much road salt or beet juice. Do we have much like on hand? Do we?
We just ordered, we ordered a three hundred ton and got that last fall. We just ordered two hundred tons, I think, two weeks ago and just got the invoice for it.
So we go through it pretty quickly? We don't have anything on hand that we can hold over? Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase order, purchase request through my deal.
I support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion passes. Item eleven-E-two, request to authorize the purchase of beet juice through Chloride Solutions for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five winter season in the amount of eight thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Every year in the fall, we purchase the beet juice to put on the early delivery salt that we have. It's been working out well. It's environmentally friendly. Uh, so we're asking for permission to, to order it again.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion passes. Item eleven-E-three, acceptance of a report on an emergency purchase for West Michigan International for repairs to plow truck number two-thirty-three in the amount of ten thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents.
The truck made it through the last storm. Then developed some issues. We sent it down to West Michigan International down in Kalamazoo. Uh, they did some diagnostics on it. There's radiator issue on it, bad cap. And then, uh, it needed a turbo on it, so we did send it down. We got it back. We're asking, uh, permission to pay.
Okay.
I don't think we have to accept the report, do we? Just acceptance?
So, yeah, we don't have to make a motion. We're just accepting the report? All right.
Correct. We accept, we accept, we accept the report.
Uh, it does need a budget adjustment.
We do need a budget, yeah.
I don't see anything in here about that.
The very bottom, authorize the budget adjustment.
Oh, in here.
So I'd make a motion to authorize the budget adjustment in the amount of the ten thousand two fifty-three sixty-eight.
All support.
It's been moved and supported on the budget adjustment. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion passes.
Thank you.
And item eleven-E-four, request to approve an easement agreement with Consumers Energy to allow Consumers Energy to relocate electric, uh, electric utilities for the construction of the M-eighty-nine roundabout.
I got a phone call from Consumers Energy a couple of weeks ago. They thought that M.DOT purchased this lot from the city earlier. Uh, and then they found out just two or three weeks old that, no, they didn't. So they found out the city owned it and now in order to relocate to underground in advance of the construction of the roundabout, they need an easement to cross their property and set a pole in the right of way. So what they proposed is a north, let's see, twenty-five to twenty-five, uh, area in that northwest quadrant of that parcel. And the pole will be located, is expected to be located in public right of way between the curb and the sidewalk.
All right. Any questions? If not, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the easement with Consumers Energy.
All support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. Uh, item eleven-F, city manager and city clerk, eleven-F-one, request to approve a special use permit for a marijuana processing business to be located at six-thirty-three Hooker Road, suite four and five. Thank you, by the way, Doug. I didn't mean to dismiss you like that.
All right, uh, before council was a special use permit application from Brandon Gillies, who is in the audience this evening patiently going through the whole meeting. He's applying to operate a marijuana processing business at six-thirty-three Hooker, suites four and five. In your packet and on the screen is the aerial photo that shows the parcels under, or the parcel that is under consideration. This was reviewed by the planning commission at their January meeting and then they approved it and they recommend that you approve it and that it's approved with the condition that they only use non-solvent extraction methods, which is the ordinance that you approved earlier tonight. And Brandon is available to answer questions if council has any questions for the applicant.
I just have one question. Is it, so in the, um, description, it just says suites four and five, but then the map's got the whole thing. Um, does it matter? I mean, we're approving it for section.
So you are approving this special use permit for suites four and five of that parcel. What we don't have is the diagram of what that might be.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Gillies? I'm sorry. I was just hoping to get some information from you about what it is you're planning to do.
Yeah.
Like what type of processing?
So we will be doing really any processing at all. There'll be no solventless or solvent extracted. Uh, I'll be purchasing oil from the statewide market. In terms of manufacturing, I'll just be making gummies, potentially chocolates, and, uh, maybe foods later down the road um, in terms of like single, uh, individual units, but for now, just candy. Yeah.
Any other?
At one of the meetings, then I think I understood you don't sell to the public, it's just to distribution.
That's correct. I'll just be a wholesaler.
Thank you for showing up to the meeting.
Of course, it's my pleasure.
All right, if there's no more discussion, can I get a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion passes. And I'll, uh, item eleven-F-two, request to approve lot split of six-fifty Grand Street.
So in the city of Allegan, the city council approves, uh, land divisions and this is a lot split of six-five-zero Grand Street. Uh, it's the United Way Building and they have a series of many storage units, you know, on place at the rear of this property. The map in your, uh, report shows you how they plan on splitting this lot off. It looks like they're putting the main building on its own parcel and then the many storage units will be on the second parcel.
Any questions?
Are they here to speak on this?
I do not see them in the audience.
If there's no discussion, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. Item twelve, board appointments, twelve-A, request to appoint Rosie Hunter to the Public Spaces Commission for the term set to expire December first, twenty-twenty-six. Do we have any, anybody? That's just it? All right.
I'll, I'll chime in quickly. Um, as you know, Rosie Hunter has resigned from the HDC. Uh, she's applying to the Public Spaces Commission now. Um, she served on the board for a number of years uh, prior to making the jump to HDC and now wanting to return to Public Spaces Commission. Um, she's served on it since, it was before Public Spaces when it was like a different named committee. So she's been on there for some time and is very familiar with the current setup, so we'd love to have her back.
I make a motion in support of appointing Rosie Hunter to Public Spaces.
I'll support.
It has been moved and supported. All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. Item thirteen, communications from city manager, council and mayor. Joel, anything?
Nothing to add.
Parker?
Nothing to add.
Michaela?
Yes, um, so per state law, um, for federal and state elections, we are now required to, um, have at least nine days of early voting, which that will be kicking off this Saturday. Um, and so my office will be open from eight-thirty to four-thirty, um, for nine consecutive days, starting this Saturday, um, and leading up to the election. If you guys have any questions, please let me know.
Great. Thank you, Michaela. Tracy, anything from you?
Nope, not tonight, thank you.
Doug, Doug one?
Nothing further.
Doug two? All right. Teresa, anything from you?
I do not have anything tonight, thank you.
Delora?
I was just going to comment on the artwork, um, that is in the hallway here. It looks amazing and I believe there's a open house Thursday at the Griswold, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Awesome. Um, I've already had somebody tell me they want to purchase one of the pieces of art, so it's.
Cool.
Be working.
Bill, anything from you?
No, sir.
Dave?
Uh, so I'll, I'll be on a family trip for the next meeting, so I won't be able to attend, but I wanted to just speak really quickly to the wellhead protection committee and I know the minutes didn't make it in this packet. Um, but we did meet, um, since the last meeting. Uh, it was my first one since I've been reassigned, so there was some things in motion. Um, but I did like getting, there was a long list of objectives, milestones, things the group has laid out for plans to work on. Um, and I'm hoping that we can revisit those in subsequent meetings and start to identify priorities, where we're actually at on those, get that list updated. I think that'll be really good work. I saw some important items on there. And, um, there was also a good discussion about, uh, possibly partnering with the township on, um, leveraging more resources to get a more broad look at the wellhead area and maybe address some open. and maybe address some open wells that are on abandoned farms or abandoned wells that are on existing farms, things like that. It sounds like there's a fair amount of commitment already made to the Bridge Fest as part of that committee's work. And so that's probably going to be happening for like half the year here. But that objective list, I think, I'm very excited to get in and look at more of that. I don't know if there's anything from the meeting you wanted to add, Doug?
I think you've pretty much covered it, Dave.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. That's it for me.
Thanks, Dave. Mike, anything from you? Peter?
Two items, the airport sub, airport committee couldn't meet, we didn't get a quorum. And the second one is the tech center's open houses tomorrow from six to eight. So if you want to stop out and see what programs they offer, they offer adult ed and also for, of course, our high school students and early college and college classes through Lake State. So feel free to stop out, they usually have free food, so...
It's a really cool place. We got a tour last year and it was, I was really impressed. So nothing from me, so I will adjourn the meeting at eight thirteen.